Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. I'll ask the Madam Clerk for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Ross Burchan?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Here. If you'll all please rise for the flag salute. Gentlemen?
Color guard, prepare to advance. Advance. Color guard, prepare to post colors. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, post colors. Color guard, salute. Two. Color guard, regroup.
Our invoker for the evening was unfortunately unable to make this, so I'll ask for a moment of silence. And in your thoughts, please remember that on January 5th, this weekend, we'll earmark the anniversary of the death of Sonny Bono, who died in 1998. Mr. Ready, I believe there is a short video presentation scheduled for tonight from your studio, is that correct?
Yes, it is, Mayor. I believe that is regarding child safety seats.
Ah, the Child Safety Seat Program. This is, I believe, an annual program that we put on in conjunction with the UAW GM, Center for Human Resources, Health and Safety, and it is a program where we offer a free child safety seat check. We ask you to come to Palm Springs City Hall, Palm Springs Mall, on Friday, January 10th, from 10 o'clock to 2:00 in the afternoon. Bring your child seat. We will tell you if you have installed it correctly, if it is up to code, up to snuff, and if it is safe for the child you're trying to protect. Again, this is in conjunction with the UAW GM, and is a service that we have been putting on here for a number of years. I know at the end of these services, there are usually piles of inadequate, unsafe child seats. Larry, do we have replacement seats available? I think in years gone by, they had some seats that were available for replacement purposes, so the intent again is to make sure your child is safe. So, please, again, if you've got time and you have children, Friday, January 10th, from 10:00 to 2:00. Very good. That has always been a very successful program. Let's turn now to the city clerk for the reporting of the posting of the agenda. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the agenda you had before was posted in accordance with council procedures last Friday. Tonight, the council was given additional material at their desk concerning Community Redevelopment Agency Item A, Item 4, and Item 13. The city council is going to be asked to separate Item 1 and 2 on the consent agenda for a separate discussion by the city manager.
I'll turn to our city attorney, Mr. David Alshire, for closed session report, please.
Yes, council and agency meant closed session. The items on the closed session agenda, the item involving the Sunrise Village Mobile Home Park, we gave a brief status report. No action was taken. Concerning the 20 acres southwest of Murray Canyon and the Jean Autry and Ramon property, these two items were not discussed. Concerning the real property negotiations on the Catherine Finchey School site, we gave a status report. No action was taken. Concerning a litigation matter, Tannen versus City of Palm Springs, we gave a status report. No action was taken. Concerning exposure to litigation, we discussed exposure in one case. We gave a status report. No action was taken. Initiation of litigation, we gave a status report concerning one matter. No action was taken. And the city attorney evaluation was not conducted. The council did describe a process to go forward with that, but no action was taken. So, that concludes closed session report.
Thank you. The Housing Authority and the Industrial Development Authority have no business scheduled for tonight's meeting, but we do have business before the Finance Authority, and with that, we will now convene as the Finance Authority and continue as the city council. Anyone wishing to address the Finance Authority? Yeah, Finance Authority, please come forward at this time. We do have requests to speak, and that is for the city council's portion of the meeting later on. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. We'll turn to the first order of business before the Finance Authority, which is FA1, the Convention Center Expansion Bond Issue.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, at your direction, we are moving forward with the preparations for the renovation and expansion of the Convention Center. This financing issue before you, Tom Canar, our finance director, will explain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council and of the authority. The action before you is to pass a resolution declaring the intent to reimburse expenditures from the proceeds of the Convention Center Expansion Tax-Exempt Bond Issue. On Phase 1 Expansion of the Convention Center, which includes the kitchen remodel and the Springs Theater, we're going to be spending money, I have spent some of that already, and we want to at least have the potential of reimbursing those funds from the bond issue. The second phase of the project, which will entail the expansion of the Convention Center, would be a much larger project, somewhere in the range of $20 to $25 million. We're going to be spending significant architectural and engineering expenses between now and when we do the bond issue sometime in July. We want to be able to reimburse those. Those, for sure, will come out of the bond issue and will become part of that. All this resolution does is give us the authority to take those monies out of the bond issue, should we choose. You can make that decision, though, when we do the bond issue in, probably in July of this year. Be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Thank you, Mr. Canar. Members of the agency and the council, if there are questions of staff on the report.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
I will move the two resolutions, one from the Finance Authority and the other from the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Oden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mills. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Any additional comments or questions? If not, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Ross Burchan?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It is 5-0. It is deemed unanimous. Second item before the Finance Authority is FA2, the Series 1992 Airport Revenue Bonds. Mr. Ready, your staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, an action similar to the one you just took. This is regarding the airport revenue bonds. We will be considering and bringing forward a proposal potentially to refinance those bonds to do two things. One, obviously, to give us a better interest rate, and secondly, to relieve ourselves of some pre-existing covenants that no longer serve our purposes. And again, with this, I would ask Mr. Canar to give the details on this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. Those pretty much were the details, Mr. Mayor. So, it's refinancing of an existing bond issue, and we're going to have some expenses between now and April when we do the refinancing.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Canar. Council, agency, questions?
Yes, I just have one question regarding, would you just share with us some of the advantages of eliminating the rate covenant?
If you'd like to answer that. The rate covenant we have in place right now requires the airport to maintain 125 percent reserves for, of expenditures. So, we have to have cash on hand in the airport fund that covers that much, excuse me, have to have revenue every year that covers that much. If we don't, then the bond covenant says that we have to increase rates at the airport. That could have the obvious effect of reducing revenue because in the current economic condition, and especially with airlines, raising the rates, landing fees, and so forth on airlines could actually cause them to reduce charges, or reduce flights, and therefore reduce our revenue. So, it really doesn't make any sense anymore, either from the perspective of the airport's operations, or for that matter, from the safety provided for bondholders. And so, we would like to get, to eliminate that rate covenant. I don't know if Mr. Smoot would have anything to add to that? That's pretty much it.
Okay, then I will move the resolutions, one from the Finance Authority and the other from council.
Second.
Motion for approval on Mr. Oden, and second by Mr. Mills. Any additional comments or questions by council or agency? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Ross Burchan?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. 5-0, again deemed unanimous. We'll adjourn as the Financing Authority and convene as the Community Redevelopment Agency and continue as the city council. The agency has no public hearings scheduled tonight. Anyone wishing to address the agency at this time, please come forward during this segment of public comments. Very good. Seeing none. We'll close public comments and turn to our legislative calendar. First item on the agenda is Item A, Sale of Parcel S, the mysterious Parcel S. Mr. Ready, your staff report, please.
Yes, I would ask Mr. Raymond, our Director of Economic and Community Development, to come to the microphone, if you would, to give the details of this report. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I will attempt to clear up the mystery of Parcel S. A couple of weeks ago, on December 18th, you approved a DDA with Burnett Development and the sale of about 41 acres of agency-owned land for, at fair market value, for a subdivision. There is an additional parcel that was a remainder piece, or it was actually slated as a future park parcel as part of the Coyote Run Project at the northwest corner of that project, and now it was going to be tucked in between the Burnett Project and Coyote Run. We relocated the park to a parcel on Sunrise Way, and Burnett incorporated a portion of the parcel, Parcel 026, and they labeled it Parcel S in their subdivision map. That was city-owned land. Parcel S is actually already covered in the DDA. The conveyance of that to Burnett is covered in the DDA. We had to convey it, we have to convey it from the city to the agency. So, what we're, this action is conveying the entire Parcel 669-500-026 from the city to the agency. By grant, the agency can convey the actual Parcel S, and the map that was handed out tonight shows Parcel S, the area above the curved line. There would be a remainder parcel that we would negotiate with Coachella Valley Housing for either a trade or a purchase or some other consideration for that, and that would go and become part of the Coyote Run Project just a little north and east of the daycare center. So, they'd get a little extra land out of that. And so, this is conveying the whole 1.11 acres, about 2/3 of which then, per the DDA, gets conveyed to Burnett, and then about 1/3, we would come back to you at some point in a couple of months or longer with some sort of agreement with CVHC on the remainder of the parcel. So, that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Members of the agency, questions or comments on Item A? What stands for your two resolutions? What's the agency's pleasure? One is for the council and one is for the agency.
I will move the resolutions, both, one for the city and one for the redevelopment agency.
Thank you, Mr. Oden.
Second.
Second again by Mr. Mills. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Ross Burchan?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. 5-0, again deemed unanimous. We will now adjourn as the Community Redevelopment Agency and reconvene solely as the city council. First order of business before the council is public comments. I have a number of cards before me here requesting the opportunity to speak. I'd like to call these three speakers forward. Anyone else wishing to join them, please form a line on the queue. First speaker, Ruthie Frazee, followed by Louis Porter, and then Billy Ray King, please. And you'll have three minutes. Welcome, and there's a clock that counts down in front of you.
Hello, Ruthie Frazee. My address is on file. For the past few months, as I'm entering back into town, driving on I-10 East, exiting on the 111, there are two makeshift billboards. I don't know if this is a city issue, and if it's not, maybe you can direct me to the right place. But these billboards look as though they're made out of plywood and in bright red lettering, 105.5 FM. Well, it's been kind of difficult to find out who they are, other than it is a Christian radio station, which really isn't the important issue, other than I've been here when Linda Ford has shown her camera-ready artwork and explained what portion of her budget is going to be used. And then, there's my neighbor, Matthew Talala, that has a great new billboard, and it's very costly. In fact, I was talking to Matthew tonight, and it's several thousand dollars a month. So, after making several phone calls, I was told to call Calvary Chapel on Date Palm. Called them, and they said, "Oh, call the Costa Mesa, Calvary Chapel." Called Costa Mesa, and they said, "Well, that's not their radio station." And I said, "Really?" I was told it was. And when I said that it was CSN, Christian Satellite Network, they amazingly patched me right through. This is right as you're entering our city. I feel if they want a billboard, it should be a professional billboard. If this is not something that the city can enforce, maybe you can direct me to the right area. This man said, "Well, is it your property? And do you listen to our radio station?" And he, he just really didn't care that it was not a professional advertising type of billboard. If it is a city issue, I hope that you'll enforce the code. I know they pay a lot of money, and maybe that's something that we would benefit from. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I can't imagine I'm the only one that's noticed it. But it doesn't look great, and it's, it's the last billboard that you see as you come into our city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Louis Porter, followed by Billy Ray King, please.
Good evening. I'm Louis Porter with the Palm Springs Adult School, and I'm here with mixed emotions this evening. As you know, I've been your instructor here with the adult school, the video production class for about six years now. And my principal announced just before our vacation that she was canceling the program here at the, at the, with, I'm sorry, it's emotional, because I haven't really, really thoroughly enjoyed working with all of you, Mr. Ranji, and particularly Rick Lee, and the program. And my last class was the Thursday before our vacation. And it's been a very, very productive class. I have, as a teacher, had a fantastic time. The students that we've had through this program have gone on, ABC, CBS, NBC, private industry, vocational education, and Mr. Oden knows, is very, very important in our city, in our community here. And it's been a very, very productive program, and I'm sorry to see it go away. I've now been assigned to teaching English as a second language four nights a week at the adult school. And I just really wanted to thank all of you for your support. You've seen it grow from the time we were in the other room with those cameras and those terrible little earphones, and you would say, "Stop making all that noise, stop making that noise," and till today we have this very, very highly produced, products in the other room. And I want to really recommend, tell you how great Rick Lee is, and he is a fantastic person. You are very, very fortunate to have him in your, your hire in this, in the city. He has been, I've worked in education for many, many, many years, and he's been one of the most wonderful persons as a coworker to work with. He's extremely knowledgeable, very, very professional, worked with the students, worked with me, developed a fantastic program in there. He really knows what he's doing, and a very compassionate person. And I just really want to let you know that you have a really, really good person behind you in there, and you have developed a fantastic studio in there. But I just wanted to say all of, to all of you, thank you, Mr. Ranji, for your help and support, and all of those of you that have been around here, that it's been a really, really good program. If in sometime in the future you come up with some fantastic bucks somewhere, and want to start another kind of program, it's a really, really good program. And I just want to say, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Billy Ray King, please. That completes the cards. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Billy Ray King, and I'm a proud owner of Starbound Carriage, pardon me, and I'd like to say operator, but it hasn't quite happened yet. But hopefully this time, everybody knows what I'm talking about. We were, I was here a couple of weeks ago, and it wasn't on the agenda, so I felt a little useless after being up here. But nonetheless, our plan is to give the people a very good narrated tour of the north end of Palm Springs, north of Takwitz. I have spoke with Mercedes Ward, and we're willing to do our own thing in our section, and she does her thing in our section. I believe you have in front of me, in front of you the copies of what I have done to save, for the safety of my carriages, my animals, and the treatment of my people is, I would like to say, excellent, and I take pride in that. And keeping that in mind, all I can say is I hope you'll consider letting me get open. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi. My name is Joy Meredith. I am Crystal Fantasy in beautiful downtown Palm Springs, and president of Main Street, Merchants Association of that wonderful block as well. I'm here tonight on one agenda item, and then just a couple other brief things I want to talk to you about. One is, I've never actually met Billy Ray King before. However, he comes, very highly recommended him and his horse bike. And one of the things I want to talk to you about is, I believe that in the information that you're going to be discussing tonight, there's a discussion about the hours of carriage rides being available. From the point of view of the merchants I've spoken to, and particularly on our block, we'd certainly like to see it in the daytime as well. I didn't really understand why this would be the sort of activity that would be limited to night time hours. It's not like we have, you know, a really urban downtown that, that couldn't handle that in the daytime. But it just seems to me that whether it be day or night, a horse-drawn carriage is just such a lovely addition to have in downtown. I certainly agree that there should I certainly agree that there should be some rules and regulations put in place regarding horse-drawn carriages. Definitely, I mean, there's probably a lot of issues there, but as far as the time on that, I, just personally, and some other merchants that also asked me to speak on this, would like to see you maybe consider having daytime hours allowed as well. Also, have some other wonderful things you probably know about, or you may not. It seems some people don't. But we're going to be having next, starting next Thursday, which will be the opening, but the actual event to start next Friday, Saturday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, is the Legacy Productions will be bringing the John Lennon artwork collection for sale in the Old Saks Fifth Avenue building. And for whoever it was that handled those negotiations, by the way, thank you very much. That was nice of John Westman to allow this to happen there. And it just sounds like a really exciting thing. The money here goes to charity. You could look it up on their website. And it's, it's just really a wonderful thing, and it's wonderful because they chose us. They came here, and they wanted to come to our downtown to have this sort of event. So, I mean, I'm just over, overflowing with pride, really. It's, it's really just very exciting. I also want to tell you about something that was exciting. I know Jeannie has been there once now, and that's, the downtown merchants are working on a cooperative advertising program, not just downtown, also uptown and the Takwitz corridor as well, made up of hotels, restaurateurs, retail, and attractions. We're trying for as much voluntary input as we can on this, and see what kind of money we can pool. But I, I did want to ask you if you would consider the possibility of maybe discussing this in a study session as to whether or not the city would be in any way able to match some sort of funds or some sort of program like that. We could sure use the help, and we'd really appreciate it. So if you could just give that some consideration, I say thank you, and good evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joy.
I'm Mercedes Ward, owner of Palm Springs Carriages for the last year and a half. And I've been reading over the new proposals and the new rules, and most of them are really good, all the safety rules and regulations, I don't have any problem with. The only real issue that I have is in the, the hours and the days that the city wants us to operate. They want us to stop like at 10 or 11 at night, and our nighttime business is, really starts around nine o'clock and goes to around 1:00 or 1:30. And we've never had a safety issue during that time. I mean, there's less, less traffic the later it gets, and there's a lot of police out. And it's a really short span of time at night that we have to make it. And, I mean, we might go out at five or six, and, but we don't do many rides until around nine, so that would really greatly affect the business. We also have a lot of lighting, strip lighting all the way around the carriage, so, I mean, you can't miss it. Let's see, and as far as the days of operation, we operate between four and seven days a week, depending on the time of year. And we do have weddings and reservations during the daytime. I know on one of these, it was saying we couldn't go out until five o'clock at night or something, but we do have a lot of reservations. And we do a lot of pickups and drop-offs at the hotels, so I wasn't sure if on these regulations where it said that we had to pick and, pick up and drop off just in designated carriage-loading areas, I don't know if that pertains to, you know, us picking and dropping off people at hotels. Hopefully not, because a lot of our business is done that way. A lot of the hotels call us to pick people up. I was just reading over the new revised list, too. All carriages shall have their rates or other charges for hire posted on both sides of the carriage, so on and so forth. Actually, that would detract a lot from the look of the carriage. They're supposed to look like old-fashioned carriages. And the rates, I mean, it depends on the length of the ride, how many people are going. It would take up quite a bit of room. I, I feel like it would really look kind of tacky to have rates and stuff posted all over the carriage on both sides. And three warning taillights shall be operated in a flashing mode continuously. I didn't quite understand that, because the taillights don't flash, but anyway. That's minor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council during public comments? When we're closed public comments, and we'll turn then to our consent agenda. Again, Mr. Reddy is going to pull items one and two. Are there any other items on the agenda that the council would like to pull for separate vote, questions, or notes of abstentions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry?
I need to abstain from warrant 983303, husband-related, and I need to abstain on issue number six because of the proximity of my house.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mills?
I need to abstain on warrants 983179 and 983312, business-related.
Thank you, sir. Any others? Well, for the balance of the consent calendars, items three, four, five, six, and seven, what's the council's pleasure?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion for approval, Mr. Oden, and second by Ms. Rose Spurgeon. Any additional questions or comments? Seen none, roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rose Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Five-oh deemed unanimous. Mr. Reddy, items one and two, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. With regard to item number one, I'm going to ask that Exhibit C be deleted from the, the resolution. And what that is, that has to do with where the carriages will be parked. We'd like to make that a little more flexible, so the Jerry Ogburn of the Downtown Development Office can assign those spots administratively as he sees fit, which will help the flow depending upon the number of carriage providers, et cetera.
Delete entirely Exhibit C, then?
Just Exhibit C, thank you, from, from the lease agreement.
Okay.
There are a couple other changes. What we really want to do, right now, we have a lease that deals with this particular operator. We are moving with the ordinance you have here tonight into more of a regulatory approach, which will apply to any other carriage operators, and we want to set up a standard set of rules. So we're trying to move some of the regulatory stuff out of the lease and into the regulations in the ordinance, so that there's equal application to whoever might be operating. So because of that, although this lease reflects the lease that we've had in the past, there's some areas we want to change, so that there's not unique treatment to one carriage operator that would be different than applying to others.
Very good. Any other changes?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hodges?
I'm confused. What are you asking us to do on this particular one?
We, we want you to approve the lease, but we want to be able to make some changes. One is taking out that exhibit, because some of these regulations are now in the ordinance, they don't need to be in the lease. And we don't want to have one set of regulations for this carriage operator that don't apply to other carriage operators. So the prior lease really tried to regulate how they conducted their operation, as opposed to being a lease of this small piece of property for storage of the carriage. The ordinance that you have later on your agenda has other regulations, for example, these time issues. We don't think the time should be regulated by the lease. The time should be regulated by the ordinance.
Ordinance.
And when you go to talk about the ordinance, you ought to talk about the time, and whether you want to change it from what is provided in the ordinance.
No pun intended, but aren't we kind of taking the cart before the horse?
You know, we were, we were, we had a bet on as to whether anybody would reach to that line.
I did.
Well, yeah. If you want to defer the lease until we're talking about the ordinance, I mean, if you wanted to wait and take this off...
Well, it seems a little strange that we're granting a lease, and we don't even have an ordinance in place yet.
Well, if you, we could hold the lease item until we talk about the ordinance later this evening.
And if I could, members of council, that was just the issue that I saw. There never was an ordinance. None of this was regulated, and that, this is, in essence, cleaning up that process. Before it was done through, it, council spoke through the lease on the regulations. This way, doing it in the ordinance makes it a cleaner, cleaner prospect.
You want to postpone this till the end of the agenda? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
Is there something in the lease that refers to the ordinance? I didn't see it.
Again, the lease is kind of a renewal of a lease that we had in the past, where we didn't actually have an ordinance. The issue of the ordinance has come up recently, and it does, we have more than one carriage operator, or it's proposed that we have more than one carriage operator. So the issues about hours of regulation, and the, the comments about the carriage and the lights and all that, those are really general regulations. And the only reason they were in the lease before is, we didn't, we didn't have any other mechanism to deal with it. And it's really more appropriate that it be a common regulatory approach, because we have had some concerns in the past that the city had different sets of rules and regulations depending upon the carriage operator that had the leased property versus anybody else.
And really, the only reason we need the lease now is because, in essence, they're leasing that area to store their carriage.
So, so, so the lease has nothing to do with, other than the leasing of that property?
Yeah, it, right.
It's not, it's not an operational lease for the...
No longer.
Okay. Gotcha.
So now, what's the pleasures of the council?
I would think since it's just for the property itself, then it's, we should leave it on a consent agenda.
You're okay with it, then?
Yeah, if that's merely what we're doing, that's why I was getting confused here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and unfortunately, again, I was gone last week when Jerry was putting this together, and he utilized the form that's been used in the past, and that is reasonable. But now that we have the ordinance, I think we could simplify things. If this lease was really geared more towards just the lease of that property, the regulation of the carriage operation should be through the ordinance, then we'd have a common set of rules that would apply to any carriage operator. And, and we are, again, this is getting maybe a little bit the cart before the horse, but under the ordinance process, the idea is going to be that this is a short-term interim ordinance. We will be coming back with a broader, more long-ranging ordinance, and ultimately probably creating a franchise process to allow the carriage operators to operate. But the intent of this ordinance is to get a set of rules and regulations in operation over the, immediately, because obviously there's somebody out there that wants to get going.
It's just a temporary one.
All right. Want to take action, item one?
Move, move, approval of the minute order.
With, with the corrections and deletions?
Yes. So it's, it's for, it's for the property only, and that it is to be, well, it's, it's for the property only.
And deleting Exhibit C?
Correct. Yes.
Dana concur.
Yes.
Right?
And you also want this subject to the city attorney's approval?
Final language.
For the final language.
Sure.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rose Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Five-oh deemed unanimous. Item two, Mr. Reddy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This issue is for environmental documents for the expansion of the convention center. I'm requesting that we pull this off this document. What I'd like to do is, is, is look to see if in fact there are some local vendors that may be able to participate on this particular professional service. I would like to reserve the rights, though, to bring this back to the adjourned meeting next week, if in fact I feel that I would not be able to do it when the time schedule that we feel is necessary. I think we'll be able to do it in consultation with both Mr. Smoot and Mr. Evans. This would not pose a problem to the convention center timeline, and we will be able to confirm that in the next few days. If not, I'll bring it back to the adjourned meeting next Wednesday.
Okay, council comments, questions?
So, Mr. Mayor, you want us to put this on next week's agenda?
Well, actually, what I, I would like to do at this point is, I don't need it on, today I don't need to request it on next week's adjourned meeting. By Monday, I will know if that's required. Otherwise, it will come back...
Well, by Monday, it won't be posted, though.
I'm sorry, by, by tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
By tomorrow. Otherwise, it will come back to you after a, a bid process.
Okay.
I'm as supportive of the idea of using local vendors as anyone on council. The concern I have on this project is, we don't have the luxury of time. And I've been getting reassurances that we have adequate time to go through this process to, to ensure at least the opportunity for local vendors. And I'm okay with that, as long as we don't find the, the schedule getting pushed back. Every day, we're not operational on this center, is a, is a financial impair to the, to the entire city. And, and you're convinced, all of the staff is convinced, that this will not affect your schedule in adverse of action. Okay? Okay? Do you want action to pull this? Just going to pull it. Okay, item two has been pulled by the city manager, then. That will complete our consent calendar. We'll now turn to page four of the agenda. There are no public hearings for tonight. Under council, comments, announcements, or interagency reports. Anything to report out? Obviously, we've been gone for a couple of weeks with holiday breaks, and we're back for the first meeting. I should note that we are meeting a typically on Thursday. The rule of order for the city council, for the city of Palm Springs, is that we traditionally meet on Wednesdays. When it falls on a holiday, we immediately go to the next day, which automatically scheduled this meeting for Thursday. So we're a little off calendar, but actually in accordance with the rules. The only interagency report I have is a meeting that was called, a special board meeting was called, on Monday, December 30th, by Sunline. Sunline had asked the board to commit to a financial arrangement to construct an LNG, liquid natural gas liquefaction plant, on the Sunline property, of which they would be an owner and partner with Energy. Energy is that business that provides the majority of CNG gas throughout Southern California. Our station here is an energy station. I did not give the support to this project from, from a number of standpoints. I did hand out a packet for the council and for the staff to look at. On the first of the pages, it talks about the action item before you. Apparently, a special projects committee met four members of the board on the 20th to review this opportunity, and then they called us 10 minutes, 10 days later, and asked us to commit to, I believe it's an $11 million project. We are supposed to then guarantee some sort of a commitment on $6 million. And then there are other financial commitments of three and a half, and a million and a half from some funding sources to build this liquefaction plant. I was not comfortable, based on a limited knowledge or the amount of time we had to review it, to cast city's support for this endeavor. I expressed that. Rancho Mirage joined me in the dissenting vote. Otherwise, the remainder of the board did move forward, and actually empower the special projects committee to continue this analysis, and potentially take action with some additional investigations. I did request, though, that the Sunline staff do meet with our staff, especially finance, to find out what kind of obligation this is. We are apparently committing no dollars, but we're guaranteeing $6 million. And my concern is, what are you guaranteeing it with? And it was basically derived that it is the Sunline dollars. And I have a concern, which I'll reveal here, that Sunline dollars are typically secured for the specific purposes of providing mass transit. It's not general fund dollars that we can determine where it goes, it's mass transit dollars from state and local and federal sources. So I'm not clear, and I need finance to do some analysis with, with Sunline, to find out what exactly this is. I don't believe it's going to come back to the board, but I just want the council to know that I did not support this. Not that I didn't like it, I just didn't quite understand how it was working. And it was on a fast track, and as many of us have already stated in our own ways, I'll phrase it the way I felt, when something is an opportunity that must be had today, there's usually a reason why my foot comes off the gas and slowly starts moving to the brake. This apparently was an opportunity that had to have a decision on the 30th, of which I was not prepared nor qualified to do it, and I asked for the council's awareness, of which I'm giving you tonight, and staff's analysis as to whether or not this makes sense. And please, Mr. Reddy, if you'll have your staff coordinate with Sunline, and at least get back to us as to what it is we're doing here. And then from a legal standpoint, the concern I have, and we're going through some of this, if you will, on, on our legal issues in closed session. Inasmuch as we belong to a JPA, we then have obligations of the JPA. And what exactly would the city's obligations be by guaranteeing $6 million of Sunline's money, although a, an independent JPA? What ramifications follow suit if something goes wrong, and what hurts the city? So I'll be brief enough in that report. I think the council understands my concerns. I'm as willing, I think, as you are, to look at new ideas for revenue, and that's what this would be, a revenue stream for more services, but this... this would be, a revenue stream for more services, but this one came on too hard, too fast for me to grab and run with. So, that completes my interagency report for the moment. On Monday night, I believe Dana was scheduled to go to executive committee. I went in her stead. There was, again, a special meeting called there. Somehow, I got all the special meetings over the holidays. Thank you all very much. I had three of them. We reviewed in the final analysis, the interview process for the executive director to replace Corky Larson at SEVAC. All but, I think, two cities were in attendance. None of the tribal concerns were in attendance for the final review. After over 100 applicants, four had gone through the process of the personnel committee, which I was not a part. I'm not an executive committee member, mind you. And the four finalists were involved in about a 30-minute interview process. And then, the unanimous consent of the members that were in attendance selected the new member of the executive committee. And I did not bring the file with me to report it out, but it was, it's already in the paper. So, you probably saw it on the paper yesterday. But I had met the young man. He had worked for Palm Desert for a number of years, 14 years. He is fully aware of the Coachella Valley, the SEVAC operations. He's a very bright, articulate man, has a complete understanding of the issues, like any of us, plenty of things to learn at that level of government. But of the four that I interviewed, I had a partake in, he was probably the best they had. And there were some very qualified candidates. Hats off to the Personnel Department, I don't know if you worked with them or not, but rest assured, Dana, that the committee that you worked with did a fine job of drawing down to four qualified candidates. So, I think the personnel group is now going to go back and try to negotiate the numbers. There were no discussions as to salary. In closed session, we don't discuss those, and I made sure we didn't get into that. They were given some directions as to how to go forward and they're going to discuss that and bring it back for, final action for you to take at next month's meeting. Okay? And that's all I have to announce. Otherwise, it was a nice holiday and a good break. Welcome break. Okay? Any other council comments or interagencies? Otherwise, we'll go to our legislative action calendar. Item eight, the 2003 Air Service Development Incentive Program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you know, we have worked very hard with the airport and airline service over the last two years and we have, it has bared tremendous amounts of fruit. This is another tool in our toolbox to keep that momentum going. And with this incentive program, I would ask Mr. Smoot, our Director of Airports, to give the details of the incentive program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. Mr. Mayor, members of council. This indeed is another piece of the puzzle that we're trying to put together. In the last 18 months, we've been going through a process of recruiting airlines and it's been very successful. And we continue the process. And one of the questions that keeps coming up is, is particularly the state the airlines are in post 9/11 financially, they're looking for whatever kind of assistance can be done to market new flights that come to the airport. And the Federal Aviation Administration changed its rules a year and a half, two years ago, which allowed airports to actually get into the business of doing some, some marketing and some advertising for the airlines as long as they make it available for all carriers to partake in. And it has to be structured in such a fashion that a program is developed and anybody who wants to step up on a first-come, first-served basis has the ability to, to partake in that. What we're proposing today is not a larger program as we would like to get to, but it's based upon the dollars that are currently in our budget and that's $50,000. We would propose that on a first-come, first-served basis, any air carrier that was to begin service in one of our 25 underserved markets would be eligible for $25,000 in marketing dollars, which we would administer through joint advertising or some type of other advertising or promotional program with the airlines. This would be up until the time that we exhaust the $50,000, which obviously is not an awful lot of air carriers this year. However, there is some potential for some increased service this summer. And we think that this might help push that air carrier across the line and increase the service here. So, we would, we would ask for, for your approval of this program. We would anticipate that next year, once we get our budget in place, we will come back and seek something similar with more dollars available, based again upon an air carrier stepping forward and serving us in one of our underserved markets. We're not interested in somebody coming and repeating service in another market that we have, but in an underserved market. Be happy to try to answer your questions. There is a resolution attached for your approval.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Smoot. Council, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have no questions. I think it's a step in the right direction and we keep hearing about, this is what we need to do. So, with that, I'll move the resolution.
Now, seconded.
Motion by approval by Ms. Roseburgen and second by Mr. Oden. I'd like to add some comments. I had reported out some, about a month or so ago, from the CVA, Mike Feis Group, Convention and Visitors Authority.
Yeah.
Convention and Visitor Authority. In, in the budget we approved that year, I was in opposition to a portion of it, which had a limited amount of dollars for programs of this nature. And Mr. Smoot, I think, I had discussions with your staff and yourself regarding this. Is there any match coming from CVA towards this, this program? Or is this a standalone?
This is standalone. However, CVA and tourism have both helped us in the past when we've, when we've had someone on the, on the hook and we needed some quick help, like on the Delta flight. Both of those groups came together with, with some dollars that we had and were able to close that deal. So, this is not connected to dollars, but we will still depend on them and the entire tourism industry. I mean, one of the things that really doesn't get reported too much is the fact that hotels give us free rooms to package with the airlines. The tram gives us free rides. There's dinners that are free and restaurants and those kinds of things, which we package together to the airlines. So, when they market in Minneapolis to come to Palm Springs, they can offer on radio stations free promotional giveaways. And that is all dollars that are in-kind dollars that are kicked in by the, by the tourism industry. And that's the other half of the time the staff's not out chasing the airlines, we're out talking to the local tourism folks to garner their support.
Correct. Was it $50,000 a CVA scheduled for the year? Was it, was it a very small number? Wasn't that large?
That's correct.
Have they, have they got any programs currently underfoot right now? Mr. Oden was asking if it's continuing. And I don't know if it's per se a continuing program, nothing beyond what we had before.
Nothing at this point, that I know of.
I think they worked on the Atlanta piece. They came from Delta and they may have done some work with us on Continental.
That's correct.
And they were involved in the Horizon piece that went to Sacramento last year. Last year. I don't know what they're doing this year.
That's correct.
And I guess the concern we're having here is, we'll do this, as evidenced by this action, but that CVA should join us at some point in time, whether in this specific program or a future program.
I would certainly hope that as they put their next year's budget together, they really focus on, on marketing of air service, particularly in their advertising programs on distant markets.
Does the amount requested exhaust the amount of dollars budgeted for this program, for this year?
For the airport's budget, that's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
Perhaps we should make an official request that, that they allocate some monies rather than simply responding to a crisis and as much as we know that this is a situation that we are experiencing currently. And we also, we're looking at a program a while back through the EDC. Because every time we try to do something with the airlines, we rely solely on tourism and when in actuality, the entire valley and all the industries benefit from tourism. And tourism has really been all on the back of tourism. And we were talking about looking at businesses to expand, to get some assistance from other entities, other than simply relying on tourism. And I think, I think we really need to do that.
Exactly right. In fact, we worked last year, I guess it was, on CEVAP, the Coachella Valley Economic Partnership, which is the broader-based one with the same concerns.
And that's what I meant. I said...
It's more than just tourism. It's the business and, and obviously, this is a tool to help lure business. The problem with CEVAP is it has no monies for this. They are themselves a struggling entity. Unless we, members, not just the governmental side, and get more membership dollars, they don't have any more dollars to spend it. So, whether we spend it here or by conduit through CEVAP. What we did look at was other ways in which CEVAP could charge, could raise money. And they looked at the dollar per golf round, the idea of additional TOT. I mean, they exhausted even business assessments throughout the valley. So, they looked at that, but the models never did have enough strength to carry its own weight.
They also identified travel into the Palm Springs and Coachella Valley as the number-one deterrent for, for recruiting new businesses. So, they know what the problems are as a matter of whether or not we want to put the monies there to address it.
Very good. Well, again, as the council says, Mr. Smoot, excellent work. This is the kind of program we want to see. It promotes the further development of air service. Under the summer service, though, on page eight, eight, A3, when you say, "Summer service carrier must operate for a minimum of 75 days," I hope that delineates that it must be within a certain date. They can't pick the summer, the 75 days outside the summer window. You've got some controls over that. This is just an outline. I'm sure there's a different contractual piece that's going to work with the airlines. Again, I think it's excellent work. We have a motion by Ms. Roseburgen and a second by Mr. Oden. Any additional comments? I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Roseburgen?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It's five-oh. It is deemed unanimous. Item nine, the convention center expansion, phase one. Mr. Ready, your staff's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, this is the ongoing movement of the convention center expansion. What we have this evening is actually amendments to the Turner Construction Contract. And again, I would ask Mr. Smoot, who is project manager of the convention center, to give you the details on the specifics of this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is an amendment to the current contract with Turner Construction. We have a contract for them to do construction management on phase one. And this amendment is actually to amend the current contract, to add some dollars on phase one and to add the second phase into the contract. The additional dollars on phase one, some $56,000, is requested because when we first put this together with them, we were assuming a $2 million project in a four-month term of, of construction, four and a half months or so. Since that time, we know the cost is, is going to be approximately a million dollars more than that and at least another month's time. And so, their contract, quite frankly, is based, in the most part, on actual manpower being on site. So, there will be additional time for that. So, thus, the requested change on phase one. Phase two, the much bigger part of the project, is based upon a $20 million construction project. We feel it's very important that they be on board as we go through the design process because we're going to have a very abbreviated design process. And this will allow for them to prepare cost estimates as we go, so we make sure we keep this project within the box that we have to, to build it within. And also, at the same time, to allow for value engineering to occur while the design is going on. A lot of times, value engineering occurs when the project is completely designed, they go back and make changes. It just seems to make more sense to do it as we go. So, there is a breakdown between now and approximately August. We're looking at about $175,000 for pre-construction services, which include preparing the various documents for use by the trade contractors when we actually do the bidding, as well as for cost estimates during the design process to make sure we're, we're staying on course. After that, there is a 20-month period of time in which we will be in the processes of, of construction. And what is proposed is dollar amounts, again, to cover the specifics of their, of their project cost of having the team on site to, to conduct the project for us as our construction manager. And it also includes a fee of 2.9%, which is, you recall, the fee that we negotiated on the first phase if we rolled this into the second phase. This is a substantial dollar amount involved here. It's, it will allow us to move this project faster than we would if we did it through a general bidding process with a general contractor. And the overall dollar amount that Turner would receive under this project amounts to about 9% of the $20 million construction project. If we were talking about a general contractor doing a project like this, we could be spending as much as 12% to 15% for their regular markup on the job. There is a agreement and a minute order attached. And with that, I would be happy to try to answer your questions.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Smoot. Council, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
More, more a comment than a, than a, than a question. I had several questions when I reviewed the information and I did go over those with, with Mr. Smoot, who discussed them with the contractor. And those questions that I had have been answered and satisfied. So, with that, I would like to move the minute order.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Mills and second by Ms. Roseburgen. Any additional comments or questions? I'll make one comment. It's, it's good to have Chris on council, huh? Yeah. Because his keen eye on this sort of stuff is really appreciated right about now, as it was last time we had a meeting when you went through the contracts, so. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Roseburgen?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, if it's okay with Chris, it's okay with me. Five-oh, it's deemed unanimous. Item 10 is the convention center expansion, phase one, 2002, 2003 fiscal year budget amendment.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, what we're requesting in this resolution is the appropriation from fund balance for the million-four, which will bridge the gap on phase one of the convention center. As you know, you had allocated a million-six. Because the meeting rooms are included in the, with the kitchen portion, this additional amount is required, will be coming from fund balance. As you approved in the earlier companion resolution from the Financing Authority, that this will be repaid through one of two mechanisms at your choice, either additional TOT collections in the future or from bond proceeds. I would also note as a final caveat, this additional million-four, this is doing what phase two would not have to do now. This is doing meeting rooms upfront. So, if we didn't do it here, we would be doing it in phase two. So, it's not necessarily new cost, it's just in phase one vis-à-vis or versus phase two. So, with that, we would request your approval of, of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Ready, are you saying, then, that the budget is 18.4?
Are you thinking the same thing?
And that...
No, it would have been 22.4.
Oh, okay, fine. Okay. That's what I thought you were saying. Again, I also did research this item and found everything to be satisfactory to my review and so I moved the resolution again.
Second.
Motion approval by Mr. Mills and second by Ms. Roseburgen. I just need a point of clarification. This is the kitchen, which is an obvious thing. The meeting rooms, is this the modification of the Springs Theater? Nothing more than that? Okay, okay. Because I was thinking if we're changing meeting rooms before we know the final plan, we're a little ahead of ourselves. But this is the one we agreed on changing at Springs. All right, that's all. Thank you. Any other questions?
That would be a revision of the current offices, right?
Additionally, right? That's in here. In here. Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Roseburgen?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It's five-oh, again deemed unanimous. Item 11 is the convention center expansion, phase two, 2002-03 fiscal year budget amendment.
Again, members of council, request to approve this amendment for the $2.275 million. This helps us through the architectural and design of the convention center. These funds will be repaid through bond proceeds once we get moving through the financial phase of the project. And with that, we would ask you to approve the amendment. Thank you.
Council?
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Motion approval by Mr. Mills and second by Ms. Ella Spurgeon. This is the phase two work. Just for future understandings, you're using the acronym CCP-2. Is that going to be the one you're going to use when we do P1, P2? For future? Okay. CCP being conventions that are phase one, phase two. Okay. Any other questions on this? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Ella Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It's 5-0. Again, deemed unanimous. Item 12 is waiver of fees for the UAW GM conference training event. Mr. Ready, your staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You've seen this request before to waiver the fees. As the mayor pointed out early in the program, the child safety belt inspections, this is part and parcel of a fee of service they provide for the community. And it's requested that you would again approve this waiver. And just as a note, I would note that the Riviera this week and for the next couple of weeks is going to be full of my friends from Michigan who are here for a couple of weeks, and they do reaffirm that I am the luckiest city manager in the country. And I thank you again for that.
I'll move the minute order.
Motion for approval by Ms. Ella Spurgeon, second.
Second.
By Mr. Oden, thank you. Any additional comments? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Ella Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It is 5-0. Deemed unanimous. Item 13 is an urgency ordinance dealing with horse-drawn carriages. Mr. Ready?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of council, again, as we noted earlier, we did not historically have an ordinance that regulated carriage rides in our city. Many cities do have these ordinances. We modeled this after, it was a mix of several cities. And actually, Troy Bootsloff, Assistant City Manager, did a tremendous amount of work on this, and I would like to ask him to give the brief report and tell you how it came about and what we had hoped to accomplish with this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready and members of the city council. As Mr. Ready mentioned, we have modeled this particular ordinance after several other jurisdictions, including the city of Long Beach, the city and county of Denver, the city of Atlanta, and the Metropolitan Transit Authority of San Diego County. What we've determined is that the existing regulations, as they pertain to passenger carriers, do not adequately cover horse-drawn carriages. And we've had reason recently to look at those regulations, and due to some circumstances that have recently come up, we've decided that we need to have some set rules and regulations as they apply to horse-drawn carriages. More importantly, because of the uniqueness of horse-drawn carriages, we felt that it would be in the city's best interest to have a set of rules that specifically apply to not only the carriages themselves, but the horses and the operators who use them. So before you, you have a draft urgency ordinance that incorporates these rules and regulations as they relate to horse-drawn carriages. We've asked the city attorney's office to review the proposed ordinance. You have the copy at your dais, which incorporates the attorney's changes. It is different than the one that was contained in the agenda that was posted on Friday. And we asked that the city council, if this is acceptable, adopt the one that's before you tonight. There are some other issues that were raised by members of the public, which I certainly can address if the council should desire. We'd like to mention, however, that with respect to fees, the ordinance as written provides that the city manager sets the fees. The city clerk has pointed out to me that we have the city council establish those fees. So what we're asking for the city council tonight, as part of the ordinance, if it should be adopted, that you establish the fees for the horse-drawn carriage permits. A permit fee of $35 would be established, an application fee of $15, and then finally, which is already set in the proposed ordinance, a special permit fee of $25 would be asked for. And by way of comparison, other jurisdictions charge for both the number of horse carriages as well as the number of drivers that are utilized, and those fees range in the neighborhood of $50 to $100. So we're consistent with the fees that are being set by other jurisdictions. With respect to hours of operation, there has been some changes done to that. Originally, the report that went out to council on Monday included a restriction on hours of operation to preclude any operations during the daylight hours. We have spoken to the engineering staff, the city engineer specifically, and he believes that we can accommodate horse-drawn carriages during the daylight hours along Palm Canyon without problems. So we are recommending that the hours be set at 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, and 11:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. Friday through Sunday. And if any operator needs to deviate from those hours or needs a special route that is not currently defined by the city engineer, they can request a special charter in which would come under the special permit fee. So for an additional $25, as long as they give us notice, they could operate outside the established hours and also along a route that's not designated by the city, and that would be, of course, with our consent. I think some of the other issues that were raised by Ms. Ward were the posting of the rates on both sides of the carriage. Obviously, we're open to any suggestions the council may have on that. We just felt that it was important to show what the rates are so that we had a published rate, so that members of the public who utilize the carriage know exactly what the posted rate is for the services that they're soliciting. Flashing rear taillights, I think it's pretty obvious why we need to have those. It's important as a safety feature to have flashing red taillights so that as the carriage is going down the road, it can be seen from a distance. And finally, with respect to the drop-off of passengers, we do have designated spots within the city that are specified by the city, but if somebody needs to be dropped off at a location that hasn't been designated, that could be handled under the special permit as a special charter. So all those issues can be accommodated under the proposed ordinance. And with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we recommend that the city council approve the urgency ordinance. And the recommendation would be as follows, since it's different from the one that we put out to the public on Monday, and that would be to approve by title only and waive further reading and ordinance approving the addition of chapter 5.40 of Title V of the Palm Springs Municipal Code, establishing rules and regulations for horse-drawn carriages and declaring the urgency thereof. And as an urgency ordinance, it does require a fourth is voted the city council to be approved, and it would go into effect immediately. And with that, I'll be open for questions.
Thank you, Troy. Council, questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hodges?
What's the problem with extending the hours, especially like on weekends? Ms. Ward was saying, you know, that 1:30, 2 o'clock in the morning is not unusual. Now, if you have to go special permit every time, I mean, you're going to be special permitted to death, and it seems a little bit defeating the purpose of what we're trying to do.
If I could, I'll answer that. That is an arbitrary number. Again, it's whatever council is comfortable with. This has just been the majority of what cities have done. We are trying to be sensitive to if neighbors might have issues. We've not had complaints up to now, per se. So again, it's whatever time limits council is comfortable with.
How long will this emergency ordinance be in effect? I mean, we're doing this as an urgency. Is this permanent?
Our belief is, yeah, we would like to keep this probably in effect for the next six months as we work towards a franchise.
So we could actually change this within the six-month frame if we...
Absolutely.
Decide that 1 o'clock is too late or...
Or not late enough or whatever.
Right. And we may actually, we'll be back on specific occasions to extend the ordinance as we're going through the process of completing it. But you would get the opportunity at that point in time if something is not working out to adjust it.
I'm also not real crazy about having the rates on the side. I know it's important on taxi cabs when it's specific as to what it could be, but I think in this particular case, you could be doing something special that's not going to be... Maybe there's a pamphlet or something that can be located that gives you...
Inside the door.
Yeah. Type of rates or something, but not necessarily on the outside.
The wedding picture looks really bad, but the rates posted it.
We can revise the ordinance to include that inside the cab.
Yeah.
The rate's about to pass the wedding.
It's all open for...
Yeah.
How many do we have at this point? Two operators that we're looking at?
You have one that's currently operating and one that was likely to commence operations. So you will have two by the time all of a sudden done.
And how many carriages do each operator have?
I believe they're operating one carriage per company. Mr. King indicates he has two carriages.
So one with two and one with one?
Three.
Three?
Three.
Total of five.
How many are we looking at doing? That seems like quite a few.
The three is just on Saturday night usually.
Okay.
We do do it in different parts of town.
Yeah. One thing I guess I would say for the future when you're negotiating the franchise, just remember these people are trying to make a living.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. When I saw this, I don't mind putting up rules and regulations, and I think this is an excellent document, a really, really good document. But I would suggest to you that this business will regulate itself, that if we say it must stop at 11 o'clock and the business actually starts at 10:30, they're going to stop riding because there's no one riding, and they're going to know better than we are here or copying someone else's ordinance. So I would suggest if there's a safety issue about having a carriage out at a certain hour of the night, okay, bring that forward. But I don't want to have them going all night, but let them run late. I would suggest you, we're a hospitality town, it might be nice, if not quasi-romantic, to come out of a nightclub as a guest, a visitor, and walk out and go, you know, hon, let's take the ride in the carriage back to the hotel. Which then leads me to, can we allow the carriages to ride to the hotels? Or are they only defined within a certain area? I mean, can they go inside the tennis area? Can they go back to some of the bed and breakfast areas, the tennis clubs? I mean, could they ride you in theory back to the Riviera, or is that in violation? We can't go to the Riviera. So I'm asking that kind of a question. On the rate signs, I think it's important that the customer see a rate, but I don't think it needs to be, per se, on the carriage. I think it detracts from the visual aesthetics, that the people on the street see this pretty carriage going by. On the seating capacity, I'll just give you a personal experience. We were back in New York City over the summer, the land of horse-drawn carriages around Central Park, and we're a family of five, and they only permitted four people in a carriage, which would have split our family, so we didn't ride the horses. Because we wanted to ride the horses through Central Park together, not... And there was no one that had a six-passenger. I know one of you guys has a six-passenger, because I've used it. All right. So it's just that if the seating capacity allows for it to be as great as possible, let's try to do that. Let's look for the six. And on one of these pages, again, I'm looking, I guess, at the one that was handed out tonight, there's talking about the front seat must be a company employee or a driver, but nobody else can be in the front seat. Is that a state law, our law? What controls that front seat being used? Is it their concern?
Actually, that was set by the carriage operators in North America, part of their model standards for agencies to adopt. So it wasn't something we put in there, it's simply something that they thought from a safety standpoint, cities should look at, because they were concerned that if you put a non-driver or apprentice up at the carriage operator's location, it could be a detriment to the safety of the carriage operation.
I just thought, family of five, little Johnny in the front seat is kind of fun, and you can ride the front, but I don't know if it's a safety issue. I'm just trying to, as Dana says, these are people that are trying to make a business, and because they are, they add a little certain charm to our city that no other city has in the Valley. And it is a remarkable experience when you take it, whether you're just going leisurely or actually use it for transport. You go from the dinner back to the hotel or from the hotel to dinner, it's just, it's amazing. And when you surprise a guest by saying, meet me downstairs, how will I find you? You'll know I'm there. And all of a sudden, there's a carriage waiting for you. It's really fabulous. And I just want to facilitate whatever avenues give you guys the freedom to succeed. Now, if we've got safety issues and concerns, then they're justified. But rate signs, it's quiet, but still noticeable from inside. Seating capacity, try to make it as free and as flexible as possible. If it's some national organization, I guess you guys determine whether you want them in the front seat, it's liability for you guys. But I would like the ability to be able... I mean, it'd be nice if you could say, honey, let's get in here, let's go to the Riviera, and the guy goes, I can't take you. And you're thinking, man, would that be a great ride to take to the Riviera? So I don't know if it's too far or too much. I just got to understand how that works. I don't know who's going to respond.
Well, we have a group in the northern part of the city, so it would seem to me that they would cover that area.
Well, if you ride the subways in New York, it's like taking one subway and transferring to another. I don't want to take one guy's carriage to go to a certain street, which to me is a random thing, and say, okay, honey, let's get out of the blue carriage and get in the red one now because we're changing to the guy who handles the north end. The visitor, it's seamless. I want to go from this club to that hotel. So again, I think we should try to facilitate that kind of usage, not anything more than making sure that the visitor, the guy who's experiencing the cab, really experiences this pleasant ride as possible. If it does something to your competitive thing, then I guess you got to figure it out. I think for our base, as Dana says, we can modify this. I'm expressing my concerns. I'm not going to hold back my commitment nor my support of this emergency ordinance because I want to get it on the books so we can get these guys operational. But I want these kind of things kind of shaken out as we go through it. Try to make this as easy for them to succeed so that there's as many of these things with people enjoying Palm Springs as possible. We used a photograph of a carriage for years in our ad campaigns in front of one of these beautiful little buildings downtown. I mean, we sold the city for years on the carriage, so let's make it as comfortable as possible. Where's that coming from? Troy?
If I may address the issue about designated routes, we do not prohibit any route within the city. Matter of fact, the city's municipal code pretty much states that horse-drawn carriages can be drawn anywhere within the community. What we have done, however, is that we've added a section under operations that should it be deemed by the city's traffic engineer that a route becomes unduly hazardous, or the operations of horse-drawn carriage causes traffic congestion, then we can take that route out of the loop or out of the consideration for use by horse-drawn carriages. So it really is pretty open-ended and real flexible so that we're only protecting the city and its traveling public from any operations of a horse-drawn carriage.
Right. And it is nice at weddings.
Nice.
It's very nice. It's very nice, very presentable. The bride looks so good. Mr. Mills?
To that end, item 10, let's see, it's under D, operations. Passengers may be loaded, unloaded, only designated...
What page are you on, Chris?
Page nine.
Page nine.
At the top.
Of the new one?
No.
Give me a section number.
C or D?
5.40.3, what?
I don't know. It says D-10.
Where are you?
I've got the old one.
He's got the old one.
Well, you're working off of this.
It's page seven of the revised... But it's right next to the one with about the hours.
Yes, I'm seeing the one you're talking about.
So it mentions passengers may be loaded, unloaded, designated, horse-drawn carries. And you mentioned that could be amended, but I don't want to do it by a permit. I want to be able to allow them to load and unload at hotels, say, or restaurants, or, you know, some, as the mayor mentioned, we have the ability to take somebody somewhere and take them to a spot. But this is kind of saying that they have to do it at those approved locations. So I think we should open that up a little bit. How the wording goes, I don't really know, and I don't want them to have to get a permit for it every time they want to take you someplace different.
We'll modify the language to be consistent with the council's wishes.
And the last question...
Chris, if I may, on that point, is the concern that you want to say they start at a certain place and finish at a certain place versus what we're saying is you can pick up a cab and then go to any place? Is that a concern about saying, I want to stop here, let me off?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to get, right?
Right.
Right, and we'll make the necessary changes.
Good.
And the other item, again, is on the old one on 10, under inspections. It seems to me that if we're telling them they're subject to inspections, then we best be inspecting them. Or aren't we setting ourselves up for something here? I mean, if we tell them they have to pass inspections, yet we don't have a mechanism to do those inspections or a person to do those inspections, it would seem to me that we become liable. Mr. City Attorney?
He doesn't know yet, but Mr. Ogbonn has been recruited to be the city's chief horse inspector, so he will be serving in that capacity.
I don't mean the horses, I mean the carriages.
And given Jerry's qualifications to inspect horses, I think that resolves the liability issues.
I just think there, I mean, I think it's something that we should look at, and I think it's a pretty easy check, but it seems to me there should be somebody on the city staff that should do that from time to time, as it mentions in here. Because we are essentially saying they need to meet a standard. If we're going to hold them to a standard, then we better be ready to inspect it.
And the question is, what are our qualifications to say we're the inspector?
Correct.
So, it's a good point, we should inspect them, but who knows what to look for?
Correct, and we do have a checklist that was also prepared by the carriage operators in North America that we can utilize for that purpose.
We don't know who it is, but they're real good, so be careful. And maybe we don't know what to look for, but they know exactly what they're looking for. Okay? So, can we bless this to move it forward with any modifications? I guess the concern about rate signs is a concern, we don't want them demanded upon being out front.
Time was a factor.
The times, you know, flexible as they should be.
Routes.
And routes, drop-offs and otherwise? Now, I turn to the city attorney and say, "Okay, with these kind of changes in order, how do we move this forward?"
Well, I think we can, with the instruction to make those changes, we will make the changes. You could go forward with, if you're comfortable that we will draft that appropriately, you could go ahead with the adoption of the ordinance, which is what we would recommend to get on with this process. We can, we will return the final version of the ordinance to you. You have a problem, we can almost readopt it, so that way you could proceed tonight. I would ask, the one thing I have a little bit of a, I know you want to be flexible about the hours. Is there an outside limit that we should set under the ordinance? In other words, you could leave discretion to the city manager up to a time of X. Do you really, I guess the concern is the noise and neighborhood issues. Is there a limit to the amount of discretion you want to give the city manager, or can he permit somebody to be operating at 2:00 in the morning? Or you just want it to be a business?
I'm trying to think of what noise the carriage would generate. I don't think the actual operation would be so, maybe by putting the carriage away at night and loading the horses onto the trailer in the parking lot may generate noise. You know, it's the end of the day and they're closing down, there may be some noise there. But beyond the clip-de-clop, I don't know if that's going to be so invasive that people start calling and screaming about a noise violation because a horse is walking by. I don't know.
Well, we're just asking if you
We could let it be flexible and find out where our problems lie. How late do they operate now? 5:00?
1:30.
1:30.
Well, why don't we leave it open, and as this process goes along, bring us your input as to, you know, what corrections or things need to be changed, and certainly we'll hear from the neighborhoods if we should have that problem, and we'll make the correction at that time.
As long as you're not quote-unquote bothering anybody, we're going to try to make it as open for you guys to succeed as possible. When noise starts generating, for whatever reason, we've got to address it, please understand that. If there's difficulty with traffic or safety, we'll obviously bring it forward, but we're trying to make it as comfortable for you to succeed. Let the elements of the economy be the ones you've got to battle, not us.
So, you would like to change that to just say, within the hours as set by the city manager, but at the moment, you're telling him, he shouldn't set any hours, it should be unlimited? Am I interpreting that right or not?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, as hours as seen fit by the city manager. 25-hour day. Okay? The issues I have are rate signs, seating capacity, rides to major hotels, drop-offs, times of operations, of which we don't want to control them at this point, and inspections, how is that to be handled? Right? Are those the key points that everyone has? Madam Clerk, is that what you show, pretty much? Okay. All right, counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'll move the ordinance
Oh, second.
With the, subject to the changes.
And may we simply read title and wave text?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I concur.
Madam Clerk, if you would please read title and wave text, I'd appreciate it.
This would be for adoption of an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Springs, California, approving in addition to chapter 5.40 of Title V of the Palm Springs Municipal Code, establishing rules and regulations for horse-drawn carriages and declaring the urgency thereof. Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rose Virgin?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, 5-0, unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, for a point of clarification, then we'll prepare a resolution with the fees mentioned by the Assistant City Manager and bring it back for ratification to counsel at your next regular reading.
Good. Counsel, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Item 14, Mr. Reddy, are there any additional legislative items?
There are none.
Any added starters?
There are none, sir.
Under reports or requests, counsel, reports or requests at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hodges?
It's been two months since we had an election, and I know shortly after the election, Mr. Oden had mentioned that we need to take a look at some of these issues. We need to, I mean, yes, the measures were defeated, but there was still a tremendous amount of people who voted in favor of them. I thought we were going to look at doing some task force, education, talk, whatever. So far, it's two months have gone by and we haven't talked about it yet. Before we know it, six months will have gone by, and we're going to be right back into the same situation, and these folks are going to be back with initiatives, because we have not addressed anything. So, I just need to know when we're going to do this.
Okay, I agree with that. I was going to bring it up. In fact, I was going to suggest that what we did, the model that worked back in the early '90s was Lloyd's Finance Task Force, and I was going to suggest that we allow Mr. Marinoff, who understands the purpose of a task force from both sides, the accountant and the politics, be in charge of that, perhaps even chair it, and bring forth some recommendations back to us. Give the ball to a citizen and understand the sensitivity of bringing the right citizens forward to form a finance task force.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
I think that there's more than just the finance task force that we need to look at. Our city clerk gave us some information recently about a facilitator who assists cities in communicating with the community. I think that it would be good for us to at least hear from this person and find out what he has to say. I think we need a task force, but I think a budget or finance task force
Fine, whatever.
But we need much more than that.
I agree.
Because the community said on several levels that they want us to communicate differently with them. So, actually, I also have some other suggestions regarding that, but I'm not really prepared to discuss those tonight, but if we want to have a study session on them, we can at least perhaps brainstorm and throw out some of those ideas.
That'd be fine. Do you want another study session idea?
That is one of the things that I needed to request some direction, a workshop, a special workshop. Study sessions are kind of full for the month of January, well into February with some pretty strong or heavy agenda items. Would you like a retreat workshop type of meeting, or a regular study session?
I wouldn't like a retreat type of workshop on this particular item, because I think it needs to be publicized, it needs to be open, it needs to be here at City Hall, so people can see what we're doing, what we're talking about, and they can be a part of it if they want to be. So, I'm not looking to retreat it off someplace where people don't know what we're doing. I don't mind having it on another day or something, another night, where it doesn't conflict with a study session, but I think that it needs to be very open and very public, and people need to be aware of what we're doing.
Then, if I could nominate the idea that we would do it as a workshop setting, because the study session agendas are going to be very full.
Mr. Mayor?
Because it wouldn't be fair to the issue to have a lot of study session items and then try to squeeze this in. That's been the problem, we just keep trying to squeeze.
Could we check calendars now, counsel? Maybe we have a tentative date, or would you like me to come back with a suggestion next week?
Or if you could call.
Okay.
I've got mine, whatever. Mr. Oden?
Yes, and I'd like to add something to the study session agenda. It's a program called City Work, and actually, what happens is that the council establishes an ordinance that, where this organization comes in, inspects rental properties throughout the city, so that we maintain some property standards. Over the past year, we've had quite a few people who rent to come to us complain about different issues that really didn't come directly under our purview. I think this begins to address it, and I think it also assists us in establishing, I think, better community relations when we look at every time that we talk about bringing in a housing program, that people are concerned about what it would deteriorate to, but if we can establish some guidelines, it will lessen many of those issues and concerns.
Other counsel questions, reports or requests? Is the counsel willing to discuss the idea of changing meeting times for day meetings again? We had talked about it in the past, and we put it back. Is there any indication as to the desire to move to day meetings?
No.
There's the issue on the, is it Vista Sunrise? Takwitz Vista, Vista Sunrise, the homeless center. I don't know how you're doing, but I've got a myriad of phone calls, emails, and supermarket discussions going on, and I keep saying it's a public hearing, we can't discuss it. Is there a desire for the council to hold any sort of an additional meeting in advance? There is a desire by the community to talk to us, and we're not scheduled for, I don't know how long before this comes before council. When's it go to PC?
It's going to go to the planning commission, and I'd have to double-check my schedule, probably within the next 30 to 45 days.
Well, I guess the frustration that I'm sensing, if not, I'm sure the other members of council are hearing it too, is that people are, they've been calling, writing for weeks, if not months, and they want to discuss it with the members of the council, and they want to at least talk to us, and they don't want to come down during public comments as they did last week. They want to have a forum whereby they can at least talk somehow, somewhere. And because this is getting pushed off with planning commissions and public hearings, they just want to be able to talk to the council. So, I bring it to the council's attention. And I'm wondering if, in fact, there's a desire to have at least a town hall meeting where they can at least talk and air.
Mr. Mayor, that kind of, I don't know
Feeds the process.
Defeats the process of having a public hearing. I think if we go into it ahead of time, it doesn't go on the record as part of the hearing. I don't know, I just have a bit of a problem. I know what you're saying, because they're out there.
A lot of frustration out there. I think the frustration is
I would suggest that it gets moved to the planning commission.
Well, I would tend to agree, and the only thing I would say is that I think it would be, if the sooner we can get this issue on the planning commission, the sooner it gets to us. Because for people to come and talk, and it's not a part of the public record, it's not a good thing. It needs to be a part of the public record. So, the earlier we can get that on the agenda, the better.
And it should probably be the only thing on the agenda.
That might be a lot more.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're going to have a night like we had.
Could be the auditorium at the high school again.
Yes, it could.
Just an announcement, this year, the Chamber of Commerce has scheduled the State of the City address for a luncheon on February 12th at 11:30 at the Convention Center, is that right? So, if you've got calendars, February 12th, I believe is a Wednesday, and it's 11:30 luncheon. And it's a little different than the morning format this year, and we'll see if, in fact, many people can join us for the luncheon layout. And if counsel has issues they want it addressed or mentioned in the State of the City, please get it to me now. We're beginning to draw the information in from staff to put together the report. We've got roughly two weeks, six weeks, and we're going to need them all. Need them all.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
Just like to also announce that the 9th begins the North Hill Networks Palm Springs International Film Festival. Encourage everyone to get out and purchase their tickets. This is probably the closest thing to a brand that we have for our city, and for everyone to come out and support it is a good thing.
Item 15, what does item 15 bring us? Oh, this is the committee assignments.
Actually, I did see one on the SEVAG Executive Committee. I'm the designee, and Mr. Klein needs to be the alternate. It's the reverse of what you have.
Right, that's true. As mentioned in our report, yes.
Also, I don't know that there aren't any meetings that are going on at the moment on the Animal Shelter Subcommittee, but if there should be, I'd be happy to do that instead of you, since it's part of this committee that I'm on anyway.
Okay, that would be fine.
So, you're changing the designation to Hodges and Oden as alternate, then?
Okay, that'd be fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. They're actually, they've already got a JPA going at this point, so chances are it's not going to be a meeting anyway, but...
Okay, thank you.
On the main street, I know Mr. Mills attends the meetings on that same Thursday. Perhaps you could put him down as the alternate. He's there as often as I am. Tassin, is it over? Any reason to keep the appointment? All right, we'll leave Tassin the way it is then, the last one on the bottom. Okay, anything else here that needs changes or modifications? Any new committee assignments that we're not aware of? I don't think there's anything here that the council needs. Okay, everything else all right? Have the dates changed or anything? Times, second Monday, where's Sunline? Didn't Sunline move? Sunline, Sunday is now the fourth Wednesday, I should tell you that. It's no longer the last.
Oh, really? It's the fourth Wednesday?
Yes.
Hmm. You're going to have to check with SEVAG, because there's a, that Human and Community Resources that I'm on is the fourth Wednesday. And I know there's several
It's been changed for probably a year.
And there must not be a problem there.
Not a problem with any members, I guess, yeah. Is that 11 to 3 indicate the hours? Because that's about right. Starting with subcommittees and going through SSG. Although they serve lunch. All right, anything else? I don't see any other changes that I can make at this point. Very good. No other action on that. Clerk has the corrections and modifications. Good enough. Under public reports requests, anyone wishing to address the council? Staff reports or requests, sir?
There are none, mayor.
All right, now, the next meetings. We will adjourn this to a closed session on January 7th at 5:30 to be held in the small conference room.